I get this call and the person says I'm calling from the Honorable Prime Minister's Office of India. The Prime Minister would like to speak to you. He comes on the phone, very quietly, Manmohan Singhji. You're going to help the Planning Commission to rethink what its purpose is in the service of the country.
Mr. Arun Myra. He's one of the leaders in the country on a field that's called systems thinking. 2009, Mr. Myra was appointed as a member of the Planning Commission. These days, Mr. Myra is known as a highly respected author.
He's done number of books, some of the significant ones are Billion Fireflies, Transforming Systems. Very new book just published, it's called Shaping the Future.
And as a chairman of Help Page International.
You asked me about the Tata Administrative Services. I joined the service in 1965 and we were setting up this factory in which Indians were going to, for the first time, design and make their own vehicles, as well as making the machines to make those vehicles. I was not even thirty years old or thirty-one years old unless. I was like a general manager of one of the largest plants in the country, unfortunately. CSR is a hoax. It's like I say, you do bad things the whole week, destroy people's lives and so on, and go to the temple at the end of the week, go to Tirupati at the end of the week and leave little gold there.
I've heard you talking about that the job system, the job machinery in India is broken and the current government has to do something to fix that. Tell me, why do you say so?
Unless people can earn and save enough. So which is why the heart of the economy is not growing as well, whether the GDP is growing, okay? The people who are making money in this country make money out of investing money. But where is the original money coming from? The original money came out of, somebody did something.
There's a huge disparity in wealth. What kind of future are we creating for ourselves?
Capitalism does not operate by the principle of human rights. In a democracy, every human being, whether he is a pauper or a multi-billionaire, has an equal voice.
Just imagine twenty years back, you got a call from former Prime Minister of India, Mr. Manmohan Singhji, and he requests you, would you like to be a part of Planning Commission of India? What would be your response? Welcome, welcome to another episode of the show, The Ex-Mong Strife. This is your host, Gaurav Arora. And on today's show, we have someone very special. Special for several reasons. He's somebody I've got huge respect for, somebody who's very accomplished, a thought leader and author of several books. It's an immense pleasure for me to invite and bring to you, Mr. Arun Myra. Mr. Arun Myra has served tasks that Tata Administrative Services and Tatas for over twenty-five years, moved on and joined as the chairman of Boston Consulting Group. He did not stop there. He continued his journey and joined Planning Commission of India as a member. And currently, he's the chairman of Help Page International. In today's conversation, we are going to take a deeper dive into what it means to be a human when you look at life through Mr. Myra's lens. And look at the country through the eyes of consciousness, capitalism, and making sure there is democracy, there is organization, and you continue to work on creating jobs. Let's welcome and hear his views on what it means to be human, what it means to be a professional, what it means to be a thought leader. Arun sir, thank you so much, such a pleasure having you here. And I must confess, I was a little hesitant, I was a little nervous. But I think your presence all the times, in all the occasions that I've met you in the past as well, you have this uncanny ability to make the other person comfortable. So thank you so much for being who you are and creating such a safe space where people could be themselves.
Gaurav, the words you used already, first, thank you very much. You asked me the question about, is the other person comfortable? Safe spaces. And the word often is safe failing spaces. Means within that space, a person is comfortable, allowing themselves to be able to say things which might make them appear vulnerable, insecure, wrong.
Yeah.
And to create that space in the conversation where a person can be himself, herself, and express her innermost thoughts to himself or herself for the first time perhaps. And you were just enabling that to happen. Similarly, had conversations with a worker on the shop floor, machines cluttering all around, and I just happened to ask him that question that, you know, you came this morning, I hope your ride to the factory was comfortable. And just it's such an odd question, he thought, for the big boss to ask a worker on the floor. He chose to say, well, obviously, that today it was better than before, you know, my ride. So then I asked him, so is it difficult and where do you come from? So we went into a conversation where he began to share with me within five, seven minutes about who he was, how hard it was to have got the job, how much he values it. And then we led into, you know, does he like the job? Which is very, what I wanted to be concerned about. And he then mentioned about, you know, that if the machine was not spewing so much oil, then he wouldn't have the problem of slipping on the floor and also being blamed for the mess around. Both looked at it from his observation. It seems to me, he said, the oil is coming from here. So then I called a supervisor and said, you know, we both of us, he the worker and I observing this. The supervisor, of course, was upset that this person has a penalty complaint, which he had not. So I told him, I said, you know, I asked him a question, I'm sorry, I came and asked him whether he came in the morning on time. This, the supervisor spoke to me later and said, you know, I've never had such a conversation with the people who work with me, never asked them, where do they live and is it hard for them? I would say therefore, that just the conversation is the interest in the other person. And the first question has to be one which the person understands that you are not wanting to ask the obvious questions, nor trying to show that you know something. It's just a very innocent question which that person must know the answer to because it's about that person. Professionally, how to have a conversation? Nor have I taught anyone to do it professionally perhaps, but I have because I spent those ten years in the US.
You've done so much of speaking, you have done so much of lectures, you have been on so many podcasts. So I doubt if you need any kind of formal training. I don't know if there's any formal training anyways. You have had such an illustrious career, such a celebrated career. When you started with Tata Administrative Services as a task officer, to when you hung up your boots with Planning Commission of India and then followed by that, you are the chairman of Help Page International. You know, what shifts have you observed with your own self, the way you look at yourself, the way you look at life, the way you look at world?
It's not easy work and you have to train yourself to listen, what is listening?
It's a question to me.
Well, I can answer it if you it's a question.
Would love to hear.
We usually, listening, we say, did you hear what he said? Did you hear the words? And then I say, okay, but why did the person say this? So would you ask the person, okay, why is this on your mind and why are you saying this? Now, in a, with a teacher, you don't ask because the teacher says, because I'm required to say this to you. But in a conversation with someone, if someone says something, if you just listen to that without reacting to it and just say, you know, I'm just curious, why are you choosing to, to, to share this with me? Why are you saying this? It could be reflected on the current political situation and people say that. So I just ask them, but why are you concerned about it? And then, you know, a person has to start to, why they concerned about it? And in that, they begin to share something about themselves and I begin to know the who the person is. So there's a what, there's a why, and the why is the question, and then you discover the who. When I just listen to someone else, their opinions, their deep views without reaction, just listening to it, just reflecting on it and saying, what is going on in my mind as this person is expressing things which I think are wrong? I think they are hateful, how dare he say that the present government is bad? Okay, because I think it's good or vice versa. It's just about myself, why have I come to these conclusions?
So what I'm listening is that listening could be a process to know yourself.
It is.
Wow.
It is. That is the only way, best way.
Listening to others can help me to know myself.
It is. You know, having a mirror back to you is the best way to see yourself. So use another person as a mirror to you. And you will see your deeper thoughts reflected deeper inside that mirror to you. Mirror bhi hota hai na, it's a superficial reflection. But when you're asking the person to talk at deeper levels, you're now listening to yourself, listening to those deeper levels, opinions, beliefs. You get it? Debaters listen very well to each other. Shashi Thurur is an excellent listener, which is why he catches in the sentences the other person is saying, the flaw in the argument. And he will jump back and it's very impressive. A debate is an illustration of the art of just listening to the words and the logical argument. It's not about understanding why the other person believes, what they do believe. And in our country today, or all over the world, this is the problem. That people find it very easy to express their opinions and give facts to support their own opinions. But no one has the time or there's no place provided for them to sit down and say, just ask that person, why that person believes and keeps repeating it with facts. Well, it started and you asked me about the Tata Administrative Services. I joined the service in 1965 and I was fortunate, lucky breaks in life. I was like a general manager of one of the largest plants in the country. And, you know, I was not even thirty years old or thirty-one years old unless. And there I was. So how did this happen? So I, it was some accidents in the sense of that there was an organization with a very powerful senior general manager and several very experienced, powerful deputy general managers reporting to this person in Pune. And I was in Bombay, in the headquarters of the Tata, what is called Tata Motors today. And we were setting up this factory in which Indians were going to, for the first time, or any person from any developing country for the first time were going to design and make their own vehicles, automobile vehicles, trucks and buses, as well as making the machines to make those vehicles, which is even more deep technology, because India didn't have the foreign exchange to do any of it. And if we wanted to have trucks and buses for our country, we'd have to even make the machines and make them because we need trucks and buses to grow our economy. Common people need buses and we need trucks to move goods around. So it was a national purpose. Karana hi hai, or there's no one here to do it for us, we have to learn to do it ourselves. So this operation where the money was found and Tatas could raise the money to buy the equipment and build the plants. But the people to do it were the seniormost people that we had got from Jamshedpur, where Daimler Benz had done something similar, but they were there, it was a technology agreement. They taught these people how to run that factory. I mean, they, they built the factory, but we were observing what they built. And we were running the factory guided by them. So here, you know, we have to build the factory also. So these people were now being counted on, the senior people, to deliver this result in this very short time. And you can imagine, I mean, A, we've never done something like this before, it's very complicated. You say the money is going to run out and we have to produce it in a certain time, or the company is going to go bankrupt and also the country is going to get let down. So it is, very important thing. And so they were doing their damnedest to these people, you know, struggling and they were just to work eighteen, nineteen hours a day, six days a week, even the seventh day, which there was no power given to the factory because of the power cuts in Maharashtra. That day, the factory couldn't be given power. So even those days, they maybe come and do something with paper or something, it was very hard life. So there was tension amongst them.
Yeah.
The who was letting who down in all this process. In all that tension, the general manager had a very severe heart attack. So he was immediately removed to the hospital and the doctors there said that he cannot be disturbed with anything for the next month or two, otherwise a matter of his survival after that. So in this position, the boss, the chairman of the company, the CEO, he said, well, who's going to be the general manager? And all the other people thought the chance had come because they were competing. So he realized the whole team will break up and he just picked me, I was his assistant at less than thirty years old. He said, you're going to be in charge. And this evening, his car, Big Mercedes with driver is going to drive you immediately, go and take charge from Bombay to Pune. Go take charge. So I said, you mean, go and manage those people? What can I tell them? Then he stopped, he said, just sit down here. You are not going there to teach them anything. They know far more than you do. You're going there to learn something from them. Don't speak, listen. You see, simple. So when I would meet these people, though they would expect, kya yeh bada saab ji aaye hai, humko kuchh bataenge, that's where I learned, don't say, just ask them.
Don't speak, just listen.
Just listen, you know, they'd say, you and, so what's the challenge? Can you please, you know, educate me, what is the difficult challenge? They'd love to explain that, everybody likes to explain, that I've got a challenge and I'm doing my best. So they'd all explain and I got so knowledgeable about everything, which maybe they themselves had never listened to the others. So I understood the whole complex system.
That's how it all started for you.
That's how it starts.
And while you were talking about that project, we have to do it, we have to do it. It's not only about the organization, it's about the country. I'm finding you so charged up while you're talking about things that happened almost like three decades, four decades back. What kept you going? I mean, from one role to another.
I'm going to share something very personal with you, Catherine, okay? If you have a, set up a conversation, a person will say things which you don't normally find it convenient to say or desirable to say also. When I was born in Lahore, just before the partition of India, I happened to be born on fifteenth of August actually. So I mean, after that, people keep associating, I'm remembering my birthday, but also associating somehow that I have something to do with India's independence, I have nothing to do with it. And so, but it became like in my being and my mother particularly would keep saying, and she was a Gandhian, great Gandhian follower, and had taken me to Gandhiji's prayer meeting, two days before he was assassinated here in Delhi. And Gandhiji had touched my head when I was four years old. So he, she kept till my end reminding me, son, never forget this, that Gandhiji touched your head. And she, through my life, and I'd read lot of Gandhiji, that, you know, building the nation to be a nation in which every human being feels that they are living with dignity and have equal agency, equal respect. That was Gandhiji's vision of India and I grew up with, that is the mission, that is the mission. So in that, I thought I joined the Indian Administrative Services to build the nation. Those days in the nineteen sixties, I mean, there was nothing else to do, you could join the government and if you had to, then better join the IAS if you're good. The private sector was limited and most of the private sector was British companies here. And, you know, they had got tea estates and engineering companies and their managers. Even if they were not British, they were Indian bada saabs who had clubs in Calcutta and two clubs and rank and played golf and got fancy salaries and so on. And they weren't contributing anything to the building of India. So I didn't want to join industry because, you know, industry is all people who make money for themselves and live well.
You were clear.
I was clear about it, I was clear about it. So I was going to sit for the Indian Administrative Services exam. I happened to be too young when I finished my masters in physics. So I had to pass away a year to, you know, study history because I ran physics to complete my papers. During that year, Tatas asked the principal of St. Stephen's College that we, for the first time, want to take some Indians into this new service called Tata Administrative Services. So far, we've been taking Indians who come back from Oxford or when Oxford or Cambridge, mostly the British universities at the time. If you have some good Indians here. So the principal said, and I had been on a scholarship through my school and into college, but I was doing very well. He said, would you, you've got a year to waste, you never traveled to Bombay, you haven't seen Bombay. They'll send you a first class ticket, put you up in the Taj Mahal Hotel and you'll have three days of, you know, good conversations with some directors and you're not keen on it anyway, so don't be under any pressure. Just go and, go and enjoy it. So I also at that interview, and this you'll be surprised, of course, I was tense. I mean, the Tatas and the offices were, my goodness, and I've been inside something like that, you know, so surreal and staid and marble and statues and these very great people in front of me. But I said, I'm doing this not because I want the result of this, because I want to do something else and I'm just here. So I was listening to them. Of course, they were trying to poke me and trying to make me uncomfortable, but I wasn't getting uncomfortable because it didn't matter to me. So I was perhaps being natural in myself in that process. At the end of it, they said this to me. They said, you know, we're not saying to you whether we've hired you or not, because you're going to take maybe nobody from the batch or one person. Those days, they would take, you know, none or one, they just want to make sure they got the right person. And if we do, we hope you'll accept the job. But we know that, your principal has told us that you want to serve the nation and you are preparing to sit for the IAS exam. We want to tell you, we, Tatas, also have been serving the nation. And they told me the story, what Ratna Gandhi said, that while he was fighting for India's political freedom, Jamsheddi Tata had already been fighting hard for India's economic freedom. And I did the story of Tata Steel and others, he said, under difficult circumstances under which Jamsheddi Tata found money and Indians gave their gold and all because the London markets had been told by the Britishers, don't invest, give this fellow any money to invest in this steel company. So he got people, women came in Bombay and left their gold. Aaj ka Prime Minister bhi kare hai, Mundil Sutra. They did leave, but they said, please take this and build something for us in India. This is in the last nineteenth century, at the end of it, at the turn of the century. When I heard that, I said, oh, so industry also serves India. So I said, okay, I, I hope they give me the job because I like these people, I like these people.
And I personally believe that if not for Tatas, India would not have been where India is, a firm believer of that. I love working with Tata companies. Help me understand, if you could just go back to that conversation, from it didn't matter whether I get a job or not, to I hope I get this job so that I can serve the nation, what shifted?
Yes. When I was growing up, as I said, we came from partition after partition. My father was given some, after some two, three years of the struggle, they gave compensation, you know, that in Lahore, Hindus had left, like he, he had a terrific factory that he had built as an entrepreneur, even before he was thirty, and doing very well and we had a huge house with two cars and a tonga and everything, you know, we lived very well with fruit orchards and so on. And a great entrepreneur in those days, he had done this, but he had to leave it all and come across. So it takes time, some Muslims had left their places here, so, you know, they got those. So this is the way it was done and then they got it and then they gave us compensation, that those Hindus who came and were displaced, you give you something over here. So he was given a small plot of land to build a factory in Merit District. And also a very small place, it was an old house there, which had no toilets and something actually, but that's where you.
Yeah.
And it was a village around there. So I grew up in, I went to a boarding school on a scholarship in the hills, because there are no schools. And, but when I came back in the summer holidays, there was nobody that I could speak with. So my mother was busy doing her social work with the women and my father was trying to build his factory. So my mother had these books, the Bhagavad Gita, she had the Toine Bees books and she had Aldous Huxley and Bertrand Russell. So I'm bored with the hot day and no air conditioners, doji panna chal raha hai, kuchh padenge. I would start reading the Bhagavad Gita. I started reading then, Gaurav, and I have had three versions of the Bhagavad Gita me through my life. And every time I start, I stop at that same thing in chapter three, which says that you only have a right to the work. This is Krishna telling Arjuna in the Kuruksheta battle, when he says, you know, but all these people are my relatives and that's how the story starts, the Bhagavad Gita. What, what should I do? The question is, what should I do? So he tells him about duty and explains the world and you're born only to do your duty, yeah, your karma. Here, I only have a right to the work and not to the fruits thereof. What are the fruits of your work? One fruit is the obvious one nowadays in business and entrepreneurship, you get money out of it. Well, those days in India, I mean, that was hardly what you did work for. The second reason why you do work is to get some fame out of it, recognition out of it. And you keep reminding, I keep reminding myself that if I'm here, having a conversation with me, what's the fruit of this work going to be for me? One side of me will say, you know, he, Gaurav and Nithi are going to produce a very great podcast and I'll be seen by lots of more people, you know, and what's wrong with it? I'm trying to help you, but I can get sucked into it, that I'm wanting an external appreciation and a recognition for what I do. This is not what I am doing it for. Each time, you have to take a decision, ask yourself, why you're taking this decision? What do you expect out of it?
Why am I doing what I'm doing?
What is the fruit that you expect to get out of this decision? But the most important thing that Gandhiji taught and G R D Tata taught us was that the result of the decision is what you expect the fruit to be, like a business people, I've got to do it professionally, get the result. That also is not your fruit, because the result is created by circumstances and many other people.
Yeah.
So don't associate the result with your success at all. That's a tough one.
That's a very tough one.
And through my life, whenever I have, find myself getting angry that, you know, it didn't work or people don't recognize it worked, I go back to the Bhagavad Gita, that thing. If I now am feeling unappreciated or feeling unsuccessful, it's because I didn't learn that lesson.
And situations will continue to come back to you unless we learn those lessons.
Because that is why Bhagavad Gita is eternal. Every day of your life, if you have to take a tough decision, ask yourself, what is it that you're expecting from taking this action? What is it you're expecting from taking this action? Something for yourself, money, fame, in which case, it is not a good action. If it is like I'm saying, also a result, and I could say here, it's a result that my organization is going to do well. That's good enough perhaps, but as G R D Tata taught us in my first sessions with the Tata Administrative Services, what are the moments when you feel it's very hard for you to decide? So this is learning how to be an effective executive for ourselves. He said, oh, I have so many tough decisions to make because he had, you know, forty, fifty different companies and different industries, all growing up in a time in India where there was no money, no infrastructure. I have many tough decisions to take. And also, the government was not making it easy because the government wanted industry to help build public goods.
Yeah.
So it was very tough at that say, what is good for the shareholders of the Tata companies and what is good for India? So he said this, he said, when I have to take a very tough decision, I first ask myself, what is good for India? And I have to ask myself, because it is my duty as the chief of this large organization, what is good for Tatas? And if I find there is a dilemma there, I will do what is good for the country. And he said, and generally, invariably, it ultimately turns out to be good for Tatas. And something else, Gaurav, he said under his breath, and even if it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
You know, with the kind of celebrated career that you have had, Arun sir, was there any moment in your life where you felt that everything that I'm doing is of no significance?
Yes, yes, it was.
Yeah, where you felt as if, why am I doing what I'm doing?
Yes, and I tell you that, that's also a story why I came back to India. As I said, I went to the United States, another, you know, you get accidents in your life or turning points in your life and you have to take the road less taken, Robert Frost, you know, the road less taken. So first I took the road less taken.
Road less traveled.
Road less traveled by, I took the road less traveled by, then go to the IAS, which with my marks in college and stuff, everybody said it's sort of guaranteed, you will get it. And I took hardly any people took job in industry. So I took that, road less traveled and I was very happy and complete the answer to the previous question. I took that not because it was going to give me a good salary and it was a much better salary than the IAS. It was because it giving me a chance to serve the nation, that's what I wanted to do. So I went off to the United States, another turning point in my life in the mid-forties. And I was there for ten odd years when I, as I said, delved into the art of the learning organization. And G R D Tata encouraged me. He said, at that stage in my life, because some personal reasons was necessary that I go to the United States to support the family and earn something there. Because those days in the late nineteen eighties, I mean, you couldn't pay people from India. So I'd have to go, I was the youngest director of Tatas and I've been there for some years already. And living very well by all Indian standards. But I had to go and earn some dollars there to, for some family circumstances, health situations. Go there, Myra, you can do it. You know, you've got this art of, as he said, counseling and consulting and as a leader. As a leader, you are a great, like he was and so on. And join a consulting company and he suggested me that I join Arthur D. Little, which had been consultants to the government of India, when the science plan of India was created, Abha Atomic Research Centers, and he, G R D Tata, was on that science body with the Nehru, what set it up. So he knew them, he said, I'll just write them a letter, they'll test you. Nehru had set it up. So he knew them, he said, I'll just write them a letter, they'll test your agency. So I went and I offered myself and they said, well, we normally don't take such senior people, especially from India. Because all our clients are in the United States. They say, what can we learn from someone in India? He might have been very senior there, but what is he going to teach us about? But you've got something which is what we believe, Arthur D Little, is what we basically about, is helping organizations to become innovative. By discovering needs that society has, society was actually consumer needs. And using technology to produce new solutions. It's about learning. You have it instinctly, like you said, it's not professionally instinctly. So come, let's see. It worked very well and then Peter Sanger's company Innovation Associates, they were small and recognized all over the world. Fifth discipline and so on, and they felt they were too small, didn't have the reach to take their tools and their knowledge. Across and Arthur D Little was more global, so they requested to be bought by, strange. Please buy us and give the founders a little bit of, you know, a kick, but they stayed with the firm. Monetary advantage, stayed with the firm and, but let, please make Arun Myra. The head of this new larger learning consulting practice of the whole company. And because we are the key, they are the knowledge, and it will be then respected and effectively used. So I was with them and I was also finding my own clients. And amongst those clients was a company in India, the Bharat Petroleum Company, it's a public sector petroleum company. And I'm talking of the mid nineteen nineties, at a time when India liberalized. And so, you know, everyone was told that the foreign people will come and you better compete, otherwise to heck with you, all of them. And so these companies were also told, our petroleum companies, that, you know, it's basic sector and we need to have the latest technology and. Big capital to do the exploration. So writings on the wall. And for the sake of the country, we're going to have to let people buy you and, you know, absorb your assets and so on. Now Bharat Petroleum, they had this old tradition that they said, no, no, because Burma Shell, they were part of. Their slogan used to be, and when I, even after independence. Burma Shell in India's life and part of it. We are in India's life and we are a part of India's life. So this was, these senior people were still there. This was their belief that our company is for India. It is an Indian company for India. So they hired a consulting company and they hired me personally. They said they'd heard our Indian guy, and they knew me from before, from Tartas, I'd been here, that if. Told the government of India that if he and his company are our consultants and we intend to employ them and for which, of course, we'll have to pay foreign exchange. The government of India agreed and told the other companies also, you also get better hire consultants, so you. Also die, that is Hindustan Petroleum, Indian Oil and so on. So with this company, and I just use the same method, because Mister Sundarajan, who was the chairman of this company, just, he's, he's so wonderful, if you want to. Know a great leader who's a coach and a counselor, it's, he passed away last year unfortunately, U Sundarajan. So he just said this again, he says, Arun, if I can call you, Arun, I said, of course, I can, but you're chairman and in front of others, I didn't say anything. He said, any, they all call me U S, you also call me U S, I said, okay, U S. So he said, I just want you to help build the capabilities in my company. That they become coaches in learning.
Did they use the word coaches at that point in time or consultants?
Not consultants, he said, that's the whole thing, consultants, they come and teach you something. And, you know, show you how to do it and do it and take credit for it. Yes, the word was coaches.
Wow.
The word was coaches, because we were in our Innovation Associates, we used to teach people coaching.
Yeah.
And they used to be certified and go through our courses and we used to take a lot of money from them and so on. So he said, you got this coaching program. I want this program to be the core of the consulting here. You'll have to, we need you, because Arthur D Little was very good at petroleum industry too. We need that expertise, but I don't want them to be swamped. Our people will take what they want of that if they want it and they could take it from anywhere else also. They must learn how to learn and they must learn with a passion and the passion should be because we want to make. India great and Bharat Petroleum back again. So you see, that engaged me. So I said, okay, I know this is going to mean that I'm going to travel to India. One week every month and that was the consulting contract, that we're going to pay Arthur D Little a million dollars, which the government agreed. All that we want at the end of it is, we want the knowledge of coaching, counseling in manuals. We'll start with your manuals, we don't want them just dumped on us. We want you with a little team of two or three persons to coach our coaches. And our coaches with you initially will work with our teams. And then they, on their own, we'll multiply the number of coaches. So the objective is that by the two years. We'll have so many coaches who are the same standard as your colleagues, he said, that is it. And if you do that, you've done your job, the rest is up to us. The rest is up to us. So in that process, we were helping people how to be. Leaders of learning organizations and every organization has a purpose. To fulfill itself in a world which is changing and in competition. So. Looking at scenarios, using the technique of systems to examine the forces in the environment, which are. Making it hard for you to succeed in what you want to do. So that's part of it, it's not just personal.
Yeah.
It's how you learn about complicated things outside yourself also. So I use scenario. Thinking, scenario planning, along with the inside coaching and a suite of four or five such approaches, tools together. So in the United States, uh, there was many people doing this and they built a whole. Um, group called, uh, the master coaches, it was called the master coaches. And some people were known by reputation and come out of the shell scenario planning group and. Set up their own consulting companies in the U S and many others. So they decided to have. A master class with master coaches, in which they invited five persons after some sort of selection. To give their presentations through a project they recently done of how you can help. An organization to be a faster learning organization. So. I was going to be the fifth. So the first four were the others and I being from the host organization was going to speak last. So amongst the first four, two were from Europe, two were from the United States. The person who was considered to be the, you know, flashiest guru, his name used to be all over selling his consulting practice and so on, big American chap. So he gave his thing, everyone was waiting, you know. And he was being, and he's very effective and especially presentation.
Absolutely.
So very effective and people were sort of loving it and he relished it, he thought, of course. It wasn't a competition, but he thought he would be the most appreciated. So after him. Uh, someone else spoke and then came in and I started with Bharat Petroleum, its ambition, its aspiration. About India, you know, how we discovered it by asking them, what do you care about? Each person who got involved with this, what do you care about? And if your time with, in life or your time with Bharat Petroleum. The remaining time that you have, your senior people is successful, what would you like to hear as the news? About India and about your company. And that really got them to say, no, this is the result I want to see, it's not me. My country is going to be like this and maybe my company respected because it was part of that story like this. So I started with that and explained that and that is the difference, you see, everyone are lapping it up, this is starting in a different place, it's not about the scenarios and forces of the world. But then I came to the rest of the story about how they then examined the forces. Around them in the world, our shortage of capital and great admiration to have foreign technology and they felt that we don't have it, but. We are able to learn it at least and so we're going to do it. So yeah, and you can see, imagine everyone was just lapping it up. But this was a real story of coaching and organization. Uh, with a great aspiration for not themselves, but for their country. And so it finished. And this fellow realized that with the awe of everybody silently listening to me with their eyes. He was not going to be the most admired person. So he, question time came, so he said, question, first question was his. Just before that, Gorav, India had exploded this atom device, nuclear device in Pokharn. Bajpaiji, Atuguri Bajpai had said.
Yeah.
You know, Pakistan threatened, we must do it. So it was all over, the U S saying, how dare India do this thing and. Non-proliferation, sub-harmary upadhartha and sanctions at that time. So he said. How dare a poor country, you mentioned that it's so poor and your client wants to, you know, help poor people. Then why is your country wasting money on a nuclear weapon? And he continued to say this, nuclear weapon, how can we trust? Underdeveloped people with a nuclear weapon. I promptly said, the only country that has used a nuclear weapon against a civilian population is. And I couldn't complete my sentence because everybody else started to almost laugh and this fellow realized he made a fool of himself. The United States is the only country that has actually used a nuclear weapon to kill civilians. Hundreds of thousands of them, until today they haven't apologized. So this, you know. To the person facilitating the discussions, a person there, she said, it's time for coffee, let's break coffee, she didn't want to have any jagra. She took me aside and she was my colleague, Jenny Kemeni, and she said, Arun, you care so much for your country. Why are you here, helping rich American companies become even richer? Because my other clients were all. U S clients, Indian company was just one of them. So why are you here? Helping rich Indian, American companies become even richer, why don't you go back to your country? So I told my wife that day in the evening. There's some health problems of our children, they're both well. Both have got married even, or one had got married, the other was going to get married, both doing well. What are we doing here? She said, let's go home. So I came home to India to serve the country.
It was as clear as that.
Yes, absolutely.
But in this process, that was the time where you felt insignificant, is it?
In this way, that I felt India was being treated as an insignificant country. So it was not me, the reflection wasn't on me, it was on my country. I mean, all the people realize that I was more effective than this person. But it's because I'm from India.
So let me just take you back a little bit. You know, I remember during the last conversation, you mentioned. That former Prime Minister Honorable, Mister Manmohan Singh ji called you. And when he invited you, they would want you to be a part of the Planning Commission of India. How was that conversation? And how did that allow you to see this opportunity coming your way to serve the nation?
I, I came back, I worked with the Boston Consulting Group to help them set up. Uh, their consulting company, they just were nothing, they were ten people or fifteen people. McKinsey was here pretty large and the other people were, of course, already in India. Deloitte were gathered because they had their audit operations. So we were very small, so they asked me, these people, they're going back to India, I said, I want to go back to India, so. The Boston Consulting Group said, we're trying to set up something, do you mind helping us to set up? Uh, this operation. I said, look, I'm going back to serve my country. And they said, no, we know that you do what you want to, but it'd be nice if, you know, our younger people were to just have time with you. Because we want to be a consulting company with a difference, we want to be associated with. You know, more India's progress rather than a foreign client's progress here. So just, you know, give your time as best you can and help us to be introduced, because people respect you if you say. They invite you, so take one of our consultants along with you. I said, that's fine, that's okay. So I came back for that and I did this and this were growing very well and Janmeen Sena was then selected to be. The person in charge and so on. I said, good, no time to leave and I'm turning sixty-five, I'll hang up my boots and go on. So I retired, this and no, no, please remain as chairman emiratus and senior advisor, which I guess to this day I am, but. That's hardly any, you know, connection. And so, so I left and having left, my wife said, look, Karun. You have been traveling around the world as a consultant, like when I was in America, you know, traveling back to India once a. Month for a week to Mexico, every, or Latin America for a week and the remaining two weeks consulting in the United States. That's the two of us now, the children are grown up, spend some time together. So let's take a holiday. So we decided to take our first holiday together. A long holiday to go to Europe from India. We arrived there. One morning and the U P A two had got elected and I get this call sitting, the first day we arrived there. From Montek Aluwalia, who's in college with me, and he said, Arun, I've got your number, where are you? I said, I happen to be here. He said, good, I got you. The honorable Prime Minister is wanting to speak with you. Prime Minister speak with me, he says he wants to invite you to be a member of the Planning Commission. I said, Montek, we gave up these jokes when we were in college, you know, why would he invite me to be a member of the Planning Commission? I'm not an economist. Neither have I worked with government, I don't know how all those things work. He said, I don't know, that's up to him, but I told him, you're a good guy. So hour later, I get a call from the Prime Minister and, I mean. My wife had told me in the meanwhile, but we just started a holiday, you said, you promised me that we spend more time together. If you become Planning Commission, you'll never have any more time, which is true. You'll be so absorbed and you cannot have time, so on. So please. Think about it and give me a chance, don't accept it immediately. But within the hour, I mean, before I could even sit and chat with her. I get this call and the person says, I'm calling from the Honorable Prime Minister's office of India, that Mister Myra, yes. The Prime Minister like to speak to you and he comes on the phone, very quiet, Liman Moon Singh ji, he says, Arun, and he's very polite man. Mister Myra, then he says, Arun ji, um, may I? Said, sir, sir, the Prime Minister of India, man, I mean, I'm nobody and he's. I'm, he's on the phone, I'm just one to one with him and he's asking me and he just says this much, he said, Arun, would you. Join me, and he's the chairman of the planning, join me in the planning commission and serve the country, he used that phrase again. So I said, yes, sir. So my wife was sitting there, because we were in a tram, actually trying to get to the hotel to be in a quiet place. So that I could take his call and the tram took some time. So she noticed that I took a call, I was standing up with this crowd. And I said, yes, sir, yes, sir. And then I put it down. She said, who are you speaking to? I said, the Prime Minister. She said, don't pull my leg, ya, you know, he's standing here. And I said, so we went into the hotel, I sat it down, I said, it was actually the Prime Minister. And she said, you said yes, sir, to him, you agreed already without checking with me? I said, he asked me.
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, so I guess, and he asked me, would you serve the country, Shama, what would I say?
Yeah.
He said, I know you would say that, okay, so when are we going back? So we packed up and finished the holiday and came back to India, but I asked the Prime Minister, because I was sure that he made a mistake. So I told Montek, who afterwards said, did he call you? Did you say yes? I said, it's good, 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 you know, great relief. So I flew back and I asked Montek, I said, I'd like to meet him now, because that was a short conversation, you know, what does he expect of me? So it was arranged within forty-eight hours, I was before him and I said, sir, uh, thank you so much, it's a great honor. But are you sure you got the right Myra? My name is spelled M A I R A. I'm not an economist, sir, nor am I. Have been in the government. He said, Arun, that is why I want you.
Wow.
We've got the best economist and people say about him, he said. That I'm also good economist, Montek is first class, we've got so many. Okay, and many people with experience in government, India has the largest bureaucracy, not really, but you know, we have all that. We want someone who's outside this circle. And your job is going to be, please, Arun, I'm going to give you industry, because we need to create jobs and grow our manufacturing. And we'll give you urbanization also, they go hand in hand, industry and urbanization. And we need a very different approach, but it's going to be very hard. Because there are very set ways of making these policies, so. But those are your subjects. And, but the special project that you have, and he announced it.
That was two thousand and six.
Two thousand and nine.
Nine, two thousand and nine.
You are going to help the Planning Commission to rethink what its purpose is. In the service of the country, you're going to help the Planning Commission to rethink what its purpose is in the service of the country. We have all been through fifty years of planning and more, he himself was the. The deputy chairman of the Planning Commission, now of course as Prime Minister Chairman. He said, then. Fifteen years later, I tried to reform the Planning Commission, it is impossible to change any large hidebound organization.
Yeah.
And apparently you have some skills in getting hidebound organizations to reconnect with their purpose and therefore become very different.
Yeah.
Please help us.
Yeah. So help me understand, when this transition was happening, right? And you got this opportunity to finally serve the nation directly by being a part of the Planning Commission of India. A transition from private sector to public sector. Transition from a mindset that now I think I should take a break, it's time to hang up my boots to. Getting inducted into another very high pressure job. How was the transition for you, that's one. Second, what were the initial challenges did you face?
You know, you use the word transition, the countries also go through transitions, yes, it's a larger system. Human beings learn, organizations learn, countries also learn. The process of industrialization is a process whereby. Organizations in a country and then people in the organizations of the country. Learn new skills and new capabilities which they did not have before. And thus, the country is then said is developed, it's industrialized. So you see, this is how systems are. There's a fractal structure, as they say, that the same simple principles operate in. All levels of that same complex system. The human being is a learning system. Organizations should see themselves as. Organizations should see themselves as learning systems. And if we begin to see countries as learning systems and that's how they develop and advance, there's no challenge. I mean intellectually and from my consulting experience, there was no challenge, right? The challenge was the challenge that the Prime Minister gave me, that we are very set as economists. To think of the economist's ways of developing a country. Plus, in nineteen ninety one, for which he said he was given the credit and celebrated. And he says maybe rightly or wrongly, for having liberalized India and given India the second independence, economic independence. And he said, this is very being honest, it's not working out. The people of the country are not getting enough jobs, we are not able to provide adequate. Services in our cities, which go as said, hand in hand with industrialization, urbanization. So our GDP is growing and I'm being given given credit, he said, Manmohan Singh, you know, for great economist and growing this. But the people are not benefiting. The Planning Commission, he said, was set up. Not to grow the GDP, but to improve the lives of citizens everywhere. And so that's why he said that I would like you to see what we have to change about our ideas. Yes, as the Planning Commission and what perhaps economists need to change about their ideas, so that India's citizens can benefit.
Yeah, yeah. You know, in the initial conversation that you spoke about with former Prime Minister, Mr. Manmohan Singhji. He spoke about urbanization and job creation. In the recent past, I've seen you, I've heard you talking about that the job system, the job machinery in India is broken. And the current government has to do something to fix that. Tell me, why do you say so that the current job machinery is broken?
I deliberately use the word machine. We think of a development as, you know, using more machines. And we begin to think of the economy, we do, economists think of the economy as a machine. That you put in some inputs and you do it efficiently and you increase the output. The model of the economy that modern economists have been using in the last century is a machine. It's got inputs and outputs and efficiency must be improved and the inputs that you put in must be. From them, you must squeeze out the maximum most efficiently to get the output. What are the inputs that you put into an economic machine? They're all from nature. You can take the natural resources and put them in and produce stuff at the end and they're human beings, their labor and their knowledge. So this is on the input side, that we put all these things and squeeze as much as we can and the GDP does grow. Right? The machine. So we've designed the economy, we think of it as a machine, a software factory, like Infosys. There are people sitting in front of screens which are machines and they're doing some things and they put in data from one side. And there's a decision given by the data which is the output. So everyone is a machine. And the operator is also part of that machine and so the machines and machines and the whole of Infosys is a very efficient machine or T C S or all these people. And the people on the factory floors are similarly parts of machines, right, machine. So in this situation, we come to the jobs, the jobs. If the jobs are going to be created in machines. Yes, A, who owns the machine? What is it that they want to get from the investment that they've put in the machine? They are concerned about the output and the profit of the machine. So we have to change the model and so. Coming to again the Tata story again, I came back from the United States with B C G as the chairman. Tata Steel, the company which built India, we say, they used to have in the nineteen nineties. A slogan which said, we also make steel.
We also make steel, I remember.
We also make steel. Now Tata Steel, Ratan Tata Stein, all the Tata companies rightly got engaged with the whole world. You know, raise money outside in, in Wall Street and but then every quarter you got to report to the analysts. And so Motu Ramanu had just taken over as the CEO of Tata Steel that year. An old friend, my age, he joined Tata Steel at that time that I joined the T S. So he said, you know, I'm glad you're back and and so on. Me, I, you know, just compare notes like about the challenge he was having. He said, you know the values and what we want to do as starters, but now we are connected with this world. He said, I was on this analyst call, his first analyst call with some chaps from New York. They did happen to be young Indians from Wharton School and stuff and they've done their fancy things and and so on. He said, this person asked him a question. But the results were okay, but not sterling. And he says, Mr. Motu Raman, when is Tata's? Going to stop being a social enterprise and be a real capitalist enterprise? Please listen to that question because it framed lots of other discussions. When is Tata's going to stop being a social enterprise and be a real capital enterprise? Why? Because you're paying more attention to the social outcomes of your venture than just to.
Profitability.
Profitability.
And that's what Tata's are known for today as well.
And they've been struggling with that. I'm saying, this was his struggle. That if you wish to be respected in the market, that's one side. The other is if I'm appointed a director and I've been appointed a director of many good Indian companies. My responsibility as a director, this is under the stock market regulations in the Corporate Act. Is I'm representing the interest of the shareholders. I'm legally born and sworn to represent the interest of the shareholders, not to represent the interest of society. Even if I'm appointed as an independent director like I used to be, that you know, you've got a mind to think and so on. But there in the board, the other directors would say, but you know, as a board. We cannot be taking a decision which seems to reduce the profit for the sake of something. Remember the Tata question? We can't be seen to be doing that. And this has become, Gaurav, the paradigm, unfortunately. C S R is a hoax. It's a hoax. It is what? It says, you keep doing what you're doing and we're not asking you to account for it. Make more profits in fact, by destroying anything that you're doing and give two percent of your profits. Hundred percent of your revenues is derived from people working, from the environmental resources that you're using, that is the inputs going into your revenues. Out of that, you maybe you make ten percent profit of your very well managed company. Out of that ten percent, you give us two percent. And that point two percent, ah, great company. How do you make your money? It's like I say, you do. Bad things the whole week, destroy people's lives and so on and go to the temple at the end of the week, go to. Tirupati at the end of the week and leave a little gold there and people say, oh, such a good man.
So let's try and understand and look at the scenario, what's happening in the country today. There's a huge disparity in wealth. The trust that we had at one point in time. It's eroding on the democratic government that we have. People might not say that on your face and yet in small groups, people are talking about that. What do you think? What is it that we need to wake up to now that we are blind to? And in case we continue to be blind, what kind of future are we creating for ourselves?
Gaurav, what kind of future are we creating for ourselves, as you pointed out, we are getting very worried in our country now. That we're not enough employment. And even if people have employment, it's so contractual. And you know, there's no security with that employment and the wages aren't.
And we are celebrating gig economy.
The GDP and so why a company is not investing, you read all even our financial papers, they say. That the market is not growing, the market is not growing but people are not earning enough and saving enough. Unless people can earn and save enough, I mean, how are you going to grow the market for your products? So which is why the heart of the economy is not growing as well, whereas the GDP is growing, okay? The people who are making money in this country make money out of investing money. I live in a place where all the people have thousands of crores. They buy apartments and have them all over the world. All of them are in the venture capital business, all of them are in the stock market business. All of them are making money out of money. But where is the original money coming from? The original money came out of, somebody did something, okay? And now you're just using your profit to put into other profit. So hardly any of that money is going back into improve the lives.
Why is government not doing anything?
Because this is where we come back to nineteen ninety one. In nineteen ninety one, there was a cataclysmic event in the world. Which was what? That the U S said at long last, it had killed this evil bear. The Soviet Union and the whole idea of communist socialism, they hadn't killed China and they're waking up to it of course. But they thought they'd done it, it was over. Francis Fukuyama wrote a book, saying it's the end of history. And what he said was, it's the end of ideologies. The ideology of socialism, communism is now forever dead. The ideology of a totalitarian state is also forever dead. What has won, he said, is. Democracy, electoral democracy and capitalism. And these two victors of the Cold War are quarreling with each other. Capitalism does not operate by the principle of human rights. Democracy, a genuine democracy is supposed to operate on the principle of human rights. In a democracy, every human being, whether he is a pauper or a multi billionaire, has an equal voice. In capitalist organizations, he who owns more dollars, invests more dollars, has more voice than someone who puts in less.
But Arun sir, isn't what is happening right now, people, the governments, without naming any particular government. With more money in deep pockets, they are investing more on social media. I was listening to one of your podcasts that you had with the common friend Amit. What a wonderful, insightful conversation that was and it had hardly hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty likes. And on the contrary, on social media, you'll find governments propagating the work that they are doing, the GDP is growing. The job market is flourishing, we are, we are all over the world, people are talking about us. What is the reality that people are blind to?
See, I'm glad you asked me the question. I think you probably want. An honest answer without, you know, jumping on me that I'm wrong. When I share with people, when they say I'm concerned about the crime, petty crime. Every day in the newspapers, don't you read it? Old people being killed for some money, don't you read some anger that people have when he runs over someone on his car because of a parking lot? Don't you read that, you know, cars being stopped and a woman being raped and so on? Here, in this civilized city called Delhi of this country, why is this anger amongst people? And most of the people doing this are doing it to, either they're desperate and need to get more money or they're already very rich and they want to settle some scores to get more money. It's all in the pursuit of money, the rich to get even more and they're committing crimes to get even more. And the poor chaps, they have no option, they feel to go this. So I say, look, I'm going to link these things together. If people don't have good jobs and good incomes and social security, they resort to this. When they see opportunities in cities, thank goodness in our villages, they're not doing it because there's no opportunity. So you please see the connections here. And so when I make the point, that you know, it's this whole capitalist system. That we are so celebrating, that is the cause of the very thing that you rich people are now getting alarmed about and saying. I need to buy a flat in London because, and they're doing it. Because I'm worried about the violence that I might get, you know, my house broken down.
And I might shift there.
I, I must, might have to shift there. But when I say that I'm challenging you in your beliefs on how an economy should be. You promptly, and they'll call me that, Hare, so you've become a communist, have you? A union leader? I said, yes, that is so.
That's the need of the hour, probably.
That I'm representing the needs of the people.
You know, I'm listening to two kinds of voices today in the market. One is the voice of my driver who took two days leave. Why? Because Arvind K G Waljee is getting released. He was super happy that there is still hope in the country. There's another voice. Who's still very pro the current government.
You look at the papers and statisticians saying, in which era were more jobs created, in which era did incomes go up? It's Modi's era that the incomes haven't grown up, in our era, it went up, meaning during the time of the.
Yeah, the media, isn't media even?
No, but you see the economists, there are economists of the Congress government who were with me in the Planning Commission. Who are producing statistics after statistics to try and prove by statistics that more jobs were created in that time. And less jobs are being created now. Then you can, Sujit Bharla and the others arguing with statistics again and so on. And I'm saying, at two zero nine, two thousand and nine, Manmohan Singh told me that we are not creating enough jobs. And he'd been already for five years before that. So he was an honest man. Saying for the sake of the people of the country, we've got to change this philosophy of the economy. That's what he said.
We need to educate people on economy rather than educating people on social media.
We need to educate economists first with making policy. And so at that time, and we still say so, his government was saying so, the present government says so. Free trade, free trade, free trade, except this present government, I must say, with courage has woken up. And said, we will stand on our own and External Affairs Minister is very firm. And he therefore begun to influence our trade talks. He's begun to influence our trade talks. It's not about just free this thing. We need to get something out of it, like we used to get, I'm saying. After independence, we were very smart and wise about industrialization as a process of learning. But anytime like Elon Musk wants to come in, you look at our papers, Economic Times and others of Business Standard. They say, oh, why are we denying ourselves the latest technology? That man is saying, please reduce the import duty on Tesla cars. Who will buy a Tesla car here? Some rich people will get the benefit. For other people, the Chinese car or the Tata car or the Mendra car is okay. And they are saying, you know, if you get this person in and then he starts using his financial cloud, he'll start, you know, just destroying our market. We might even dump them initially. So please, you know, be careful, the people who are devoting themselves to building this country. You have to create this container that we talked about. We talked about a container for a conversation. There's a container that you create for young people when they have to learn. That is the essence of a school. That, you know, we create a safe space where you can inquire, you can learn, try and fail and do it. So the India, all developing countries have created a container around themselves. Japan did it. And they used to object to say, the Japanese don't want to buy anybody else's goods, they got high duties against other people's goods. And they're saying about China and now when they're saying China stole our technology. They didn't steal it, you people went in there and made those deals and even now the Germans are running back and trying to make deals and Elon Musk is going to China also. It's, it's good for them, but you've got to have the courage to put your requirements also. It's a partnership.
It's a partnership and yeah, it's an equal to equal partnership. You know, the world is talking about that. At least the media is talking about, let me correct myself, the media is talking about that India is in the. Is on the center stage of the geopolitical scenario worldwide. The media is saying that could be a possibility that India is going to overtake China and especially post Covid. What is the reality? What's the fact that we are not aware of?
You must look at any politics, local politics, gao kee politics, geopolitics through the lens of power. Who has more power? What is power derived from? One is very obviously, we are saying, he who has the most money has the most power, he can buy the media, he can control. All the communications, he has, especially in the modern world, most power, money. The second is, if you have arms, whoever has more. Control over the violence has more power naturally. The third is, if you honor somebody and say you've got the best knowledge. And they keep building it up to say, our knowledge is superior, the knowledge gives you the power. Brahmins. Shatryas fighting karte hain. Or Hindi, Vaishnava to do the trading. So we have a caste system and this has been through in the world. It's not just in India, as Piketty who's talked about inequality, says in Europe also. If you look at societies and politics, when the wealthy class, being class who makes money out of money and out of, you know. Business begins to have lot more power and influences the political process. Then the society gets distorted and starts forgetting the common people. That's why the inequality increases. So in this situation, I'm saying right here, in the geopolitics, America continues to have. Naturally, the largest armies by far and they use them and give their arms to others. Ukraine, Israel, they have it, much, much more than everybody and they keep investing in it. The second is in financial power, I mean, it is a large economy, but more than that, they're controlling all. The financial control systems, A, they control the value of the dollar, they're bankers. And they, they can easily impose financial sanctions on anybody because you know, all our transactions have to ultimately land up. On some servers with these American institutions, so financial power, they have it. Third thing. All our people want to go to Harvard and Oxford and now economics over there. They, that's the thing, that American ideas are the best. So you see, American ideas are the best. Hare, we poor chaps have to develop and learn. The Chinese have resisted this. And their universities are being now admired. I mean, defense and industry will take a long time because it needs investment technology. In terms of producing things that people need like electrical vehicles and renewable energy, they are far ahead of the Americans, which Americans are now worried about. So we don't have that place yet, but the only way we'll get that place is to stand and learn. Yes, our ideas may not be the best, but don't keep lapping up other people's ideas and saying. We're getting their technology and let them keep using it and taking the profits back. No, I won't let you make any profits here unless you help my people to learn. And they're very good learners, our Indians are very good learners because they're keen to. Get a better job, maybe a more income, but more than that, to serve the country.
So here, since we are talking about what could possibly be done to make India the superpower. If possibly we start to invest in learning, if we start to invest in on our army and the arms and the education system and. Making sure that we have the necessary power. And making sure that we have the necessary power, there is future. Now let's say, you are a part of Niti Ayog today.
But before that, Vishwa Guru is the word that our Prime Minister uses, and there is something there. It's not about having more arms and more money. That we should be looking at the way to change the world. It is about respecting nature, it's about respecting human beings. So, vukya kahate hain, vasudeva kutumaka means, it's one family.
One family.
One family and one future. It's not about one economy and one future. Globalization for the last thirty years been, it's one economy, the world is one economy and collectively it is one economy and one future. It's about a family and we want to formalize what is actually working and what the world needs more of. Because if you want to have sustainable economies, means nature needs to be considered as part of the system. Or not to take resources from nature, put them into the factory and produce some stuff and they say, I have to dump it and the circulation is the problem. The world is suffering this, we have to change a concept of form. Social and economic enterprises should not any longer be in the factory form, they should be in the family form.
Here's the last question for you, sir. You know, if today you are a part of Niti Ayog. What would you continue to celebrate that we are doing right for the growth of the organization in terms of the policies? That could be good for the common man? And what amendments would you bring in?
Gaurav, this is, I'm going to say in a family, my grandson's story, so I got this job from the Prime Minister Manmohan Singh. And I mean, I was going to think about how do I do my transformation, then I, of course, we did that too. My grandson comes visiting from the United States and they, my son works there, so he was born there. He'd come once before, before I joined the planning commission, when he was five, now he was seven. When he came at five, we took him to show him capital city of his country, Delhi. And he saw poor people in the heart of Delhi, it's a lovely city, Luton's Delhi. But every corner, there were some people on the side, cooking on the side and students running around naked on the side. So he asked his mother, who was in the car, driving, he said, why are these people doing all this over here? So she said to him, India's a very poor country, you're a lucky fellow that you live in a rich country, we have a house with. A bedroom for you and a bathroom for you and a bathroom and bedroom for all of us and you know, playing ground outside for you. With a fence around it and these poor children, they don't have all of that. So it stuck this five-year-old boy, he comes two years later and once again, he was driving in the same place. By this time, I'd been hired into the planning commission, so I have a nice white ambassador car with a Jhanda. Uh, and a driver sitting there and my grandson sitting with me at the back. And my son sitting in the front and we've been driven back from Delhi to come to this place, Gurgaon. And he, uh, my grandson suddenly, we're driving the same areas, Pasne Zamu Dine, Waha, Dargi Khasan. And you know how many crowds there are beggars around there? So he suddenly exploded, he says, what's the government doing, just counting daisies? So my son turned around, I said, what do you mean counting daisies? He said, look, there's so many poor people, there are even more poor people than when I came last time. At that time, Gaurav, we, the Planning Commission, were debating about the Tendurkot poverty line and our numbers we were using to prove. Many more Indians have come out of poverty than they were, you know, before the U P A government started. We were arguing this, so the point is they're not numbers. So my dear grandson comes to the planning commission, I had to explain to him, because my son said, I don't say this, Dadaji is not planning commission. He's the government. I said, this person who plays with ball with him is now government, he didn't know what government is. So I took him to the planning commission to show him what I do.